Good evening. I'd like to call the January tenth, twenty twenty-three, our first council meeting of twenty twenty-three at six thirty P. M. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Recorder? Can you call the roll?
Can you hand me that one, Matt? Counselor Tesdahl?
Here.
Counselor Nielsen?
Present.
Counselor Shepherd?
Present.
Counselor Tret?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
Present.
Counselor Page?
Present.
Recorder, should be noted, Counselor Luke is en route. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Uh, we need to, uh...
Oh, we do need to vote on that.
We do need to vote on that. Counselor Luke is present now. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the agenda? We moved that second, uh, in the call that I'm not...
Counselor Tesdahl? Counselor Nielsen?
Aye.
Counselor Shepherd?
Aye.
Counselor Tret?
Aye.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Page?
Aye.
Counselor Luke?
Um, unanimous. Motion passed. Next on the agenda would be, uh, I need a motion to accept, uh, the election results. Counselor Nielsen's second. To vote on that, James, well, alright? Can I, can I have a voice of approval on that? All those in favor of acceptance of election results?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Alright. Uh, so, uh, that being said, uh, we have a certificate, uh, from Bill Burgess, Marion County Clerk, Chief Election Official of Marion County, uh, that he has certified that election results, uh, are in fact true. So, at this point, we should nominate and appoint mayor.
Um, excuse me, we need to do an oath of office for the counselors first?
That's oath of office for counselors, Luke.
Yeah, I'll get it.
Can you do that? The oath of will swear and oath of office for counselors.
Hi, Michelle Tesdahl.
Swear that I will support the constitutions?
Swear that I will support the constitutions?
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
State of Oregon?
The state of Oregon.
And the city of Detroit.
And the city of Detroit.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Detroit City Councilor.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Detroit City Councilor.
I, Danny Nielsen. Swear that I will support the constitution.
I, Greg Shepherd. Swear that I will support the constitution and laws of the United States, the state of Oregon, and the city of Detroit, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of Detroit City Councilor.
I, Todd Smith, swear that I will support the constitutions and laws of the United States, the state of Oregon, and the city of Detroit, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of Councilor.
Uh, at this time, we would like to move on and nominate and appoint mayor. Do I have nominations, or do I have a nomination for mayor for the twenty twenty-three, uh, year in Detroit? Danny?
I nominate Counselor Tret.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? And we need to call, uh, vote, call the vote on that as well. Call the vote, please.
Counselor Tesdahl?
Aye.
Counselor Nielsen?
Aye.
Counselor Shepherd?
Aye.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Page?
Aye.
Counselor Luke? Mayor Tret?
Unanimous.
(laughing).
It's about to be unanimous.
Okay. Hi.
Sorry.
Unanimous vote. Uh, would you, uh, stand, uh, Counselor Tret and receive, uh, the oath of office for mayor?
I, Jones, Tret, swear that I will support the constitution and laws of the United States, the state of Oregon, and the city of Detroit, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of mayor of the city of Detroit. Thank you, everyone.
At this point, I will return, uh, control of the meeting to Mayor Tret.
We're in trouble. Thank you. Uh, we now get to nominate and appoint, uh, city, uh, council president. Do I have nominations for council president?
I'll nominate Danny Nielsen.
Have a motion, Counselor, for Counselor Nielsen, or any other nominations?
On the council rules, the, the vice president gets two years.
Oh, really? I should read those, okay? I didn't understand.
Every odd, every odd year that we change, that we vote on council vice president. So, next year, we would vote on it.
So, thank you, Coach.
You're welcome.
Counselor Page, congratulations on your second year. Good job. Okay.
Okay.
Next is item six, appointment of couns...
Thank you, Counselor Tesdahl. Keeping things clean.
Item six, appointment of council commissioners by the mayor with consent of council. Uh, looking at the current commissions, uh, we have all the same bodies in place. I haven't heard from anybody that they want to switch. So, um, with consent of council, I will just, uh, appoint, reappoint, uh, street commissioner Greg Shepherd, building commissioner Tim Luke, emergency preparedness commissioner myself, water commissioner Eric Page, police and safety commissioner Todd Smith, parks and recreation commissioner Michelle Tesdahl, and commercial district rebuild commissioner Danny Nielsen. Do I hear any objection? Moving right along. Folks, we've got to get through this every, the first one every year, sorry. Uh, item seven, appointment of personnel review board members by the mayor with consent of council. Current per, personnel review board members are Tim Luke, Todd Smith. Do you both want to continue? Me as well? Okay. Uh, without con, with consent of council, without objection from council, uh, Tim Luke and Todd Smith are reappointed to the, uh, personnel review board. Item eight, appointment of, of alternate personal review board member by the mayor and consent of council. Current personal review board member is Michelle Tesdahl. Would you consider staying in that position?
Yes.
Without objection? Uh, Michelle Tesdahl is appointed to another term as the, uh, per, on, as the alternate of the personal review board. Specials orders, orders of business. Hearing none, moving on to committee reports. This is time is set aside for committees established by law, ordinance, or other authority to report to the city council on the com, committee's ongoing work. Any committee reports? Seeing none. Public comment. And folks, I know some of you are here to talk about the ATV ordinance thing, so this is not where you're going to testify. This is for things not on the agenda. So, there, there will be time later on when we get to that item. So, uh, public comments, this is the time set aside for comments from the public on matters not on the agenda. Commenters are limited to three minutes. Time may not be yielded. Questions from the council or staff to commenters shall not be counted against allotted through, the allotted three minutes. Is there anybody who would like to address the council on a subject not on the agenda? Moving along. Okay? Okay, Debbie, can you come up? Because we need that mic, yeah. And Debbie, that's so we can, people watching on Facebook and all that stuff can listen. Could you...
Twenty-five Melgar Court in Detroit, I'm a permanent resident. I just, and maybe it'll be coming, uh, up in the reports from the ca, uh, commissioners, but I'm just wondering, kind of, what happened with the water that caught a lot of people by surprise? It was pretty ugly at our house. So, I guess I know other people in town, we're just wondering, kind of like, what happened? How did, how, what's been fixed so it won't happen again? Because I keep hearing February is our worst winter month. Um, oh, maybe that'll already be, already covered, but I just want to make sure. And then, on the floor by my chair was a letter from Pam and Ron Lyman, Lehman, uh, property owners on Humbug, and they're kind of asking some of those same questions. So, I'm, you know, I'm not the only one that would appreciate, you know, just a better understanding of what happened and how it's not going to happen again. And, you know, I appreciate, I'm sure everybody was out there in the horrible weather fixing things, but, you know, ideally, it would be, not come up as an issue and, and it'll be fixed now, and we won't face that again. So, and you can do it now, or you can do it on your report?
How would you like to proceed with that?
Why don't we handle that right now?
Right now?
Yeah.
I, and I'll, I'll certainly take the floor on a, a good portion of that, uh, try and, try and bring some clarity to it. So, uh, I would put it in perspective of a one, two, three punch is pretty much what happened up here. We had some severe freezing weather that occurred and a very rapid warm-up. Uh, we went from in free, in below freezing temperatures to a day that I think, that first day it warmed up, it shot up to about forty-seven degrees up there. A very rapid warm-up. During that time, um, we had numerous large volume leaks that occurred that were on the other side of the meter, not on the city's side, but on property owner's side of meters. So, uh, with some s, snow still on the ground, trying to chase some of those leaks down was extremely difficult. We also encountered, uh, not far after that, uh, some extreme rainstorm, uh, some melting into the river brought the turbidity of the water way up. Uh, that began clogging the pumps. And following that episode, a power outage. We had an emergency generator on site within three hours of power outage and had the ability to process water again. However, the turbidity in the river and the leak, the leaks that we were experiencing were far too great to get tracked down. And the tank at that point, because of the size of the leaks, had become dangerously low. The decision was made at that point to shut the tank off and not allow the tank to go completely dry. Because had we chosen to try and keep water going, uh, and the tank had gone completely dry, we would've been experiencing at least an additional five-day delay, because everything has to be flushed, rinsed, and, and that is not where we want to be with letting the tank run dry. So, there was a decision made to shut that tank down until we could get control of what was going on with the water. I will, at this point, also add that our public works employees worked tirelessly, in the dark, in crappy weather conditions, to try and find the leaks that had occurred, get things shut down, which they did a great job getting things shut down. We called in, uh, the, uh, water resource people. This was also during the holiday period of time, and getting people on site in Oregon Water Resources was tough, but we did, in fact, get some of those people up here. Ultimately, there was, in the neighborhood of about five major leaks. One of them, a residential line in twenty-four hours blew through a hundred and twenty thousand gallons of water. So, if you can only imagine, I mean, we were losing a drastic amount of water. End result ended up being the, uh, Mackey intake. We were able to, luckily, the, the Mackey Creek began to clear up, and we were able to get the pump automatically cycles and flushes out of the debris. And once that began to clear up, we were able to get, uh, more volume coming in, and we got the leak shut down. The bungalows have been a, an ongoing problem. That has been resolved. All of those leaks have been, uh, chased down, shut down, repaired. Right now, I think, from my personal standpoint, talking with Derek Valet, we're holding water probably better than we have been in a long time, especially cleaning up the problem that's been going on with the bungalows. They've been chasing leaks there for three to four months, losing substantial amounts of water. So, unfortunately, Detroit is extremely porous. When there's a major water leak here, you would think that amount of water would show up, but it doesn't. It goes right in the ground, and it's, it's, it's a bugger to chase. But, at the end of the day, no matter what, Mother Nature was really tough on us in about a five-day period, and you just, I don't care what C E R, you know, we had power back on here before, uh, some of the areas of Beaverton had power back on. I know the water was, was an inconvenience. Is our plant large enough? Uh, we're looking at that. Um, I think we can maybe get some, uh, help from FEMA on either upsizing the plant, temporary plant, that is, until the other one is built. But more so, I think we're looking right now at possibly some more storage capacity, because no matter what happens in this area, Mother Nature is going to continue to pro, provide challenges for us, uh, as far as having water constantly on. It just, there's a lot of things that come at us, and when that river gets dirty, or Brighton Bush gets dirty, we can only produce so much water. That's just where our water comes from. So, that's, that's what I've got for you guys. My number is available, call me. We did everything we could to get water as fast as we possibly could. And Marion County was really good to us again. We had cases of water, uh, pallets of water up here within eight hours, I think, was on the ground. So, you know, I take some questions, if I can answer anybody's questions, if I haven't provided the information you need to know. But that's my overshot of the, the whole thing that, that occurred.
A couple of months ago, you guys approved forty-five hundred dollars to build a building over the Brighton Bush intake stuff, I believe? I mean, and I heard Derek was great and, and built that and saved us some money. I mean, is that, like, insulated? I mean, is, is whatever froze or happened, going to happen again? And I thought we couldn't use Mackey because of all the debris and the runoff and everything.
We use Mackey as our main water source, and actually, we pull off a Brighton Bush secondary most of the time. There was a airlock on top of the pump on the Brighton Bush, uh, station that did freeze. Uh, we have addressed that.
Okay, so it's been addressed.
Our engineering firm did not recommend, what, the recommendation was to not insulate that building on the Brighton, Brighton Bush, my understanding. Please do.
Yeah, so, the pumps themselves are, they are rated for outdoor use, that's, that's not an issue. The issue with the pumps and the structure needing to be built is snow piling up around them, and then no oxygen flows, and no new pumps, and there's no oxygen flow that the pumps turn out. So, the shelter is more to keep the snow off and the oxygen passes through the pumps. So, the, the issue was, as Eric mentioned, it kind of threefolded. You had the, the leaks on the private side that caused, I mean, a hundred and seventy, seven hundred and twenty thousand gallons, that, that in and of itself, about sixty-five percent of your city's entire storage, uh, coming out of one tank. And then, once, once the freezing thawed back a little bit, the water quality in the surface water sources was so bad, the, the city was barely able to make any water at all, because there's so much sediment coming down the river. So, it's just a combination of huge leaks from freezing the perfect pipes, in addition to not being able to make water to refuel.
So, we are using back, I mean, I know we used to use Mackey most of the time. Last night, we heard we weren't going to use it for, you know, a couple of years, which it's been a couple of years, but I guess I never heard that Mackey was back online.
So, we're still using Mackey particularly in the winter months. Mackey is actually here, can I say this? It, it's complicated, but generally speaking, Mackey is a high-quality water source. Brighton Bush gets a lot more sediment coming down the river, so in the wintertime, it would rely more heavily on Mackey. After the fires, all vegetation in the Mackey watershed burnt off, so the slopes around it are much more destabilized than they were before the fire. So, there's a higher risk of a landslide and more sediment coming down Mackey, but in general, it is still useful in parts of the region.
I, I didn't realize that last night, I heard, we weren't...
We did spend, uh, it was about four thousand dollars this spring as a precursor to this, uh, this year. The, I, it's like, I call it a, it's a water diver box. It's a big box that sits down in Mackey Creek where the intake pipe comes in. If, that was in extremely horrible shape. It's made out of, of metal with, uh, it's, it's got, uh, openings all the way around it, but it keeps the rocks out, so it doesn't pull those in. And that, we removed that on Mackey. We were running off of Brighton Bush. Took it down to state, had it completely rebuilt. It's better than it has been in years. And then it was set back into Mackey Creek. So, that's actually been working very well for us this year. Uh, we've had a little cave-in around that, and we've had less maintenance as far as keeping rocks out of that, which can impede a pipe pulling water there. So, uh, I mean, we're doing the things that we have available for us to get done, keep the thing running. I think more storage capacity is probably in order. Matt's been speaking with FEMA on that. It's not, I know there has been a question about the sand filters, and then I'm going to end my dissertation here. Those sand filters that we have up there, this discussion's gone around and around and around, that they are not usable and will not be usable probably, I, I think the estimate is five to seven years before we can bring the sand filters back online. So, we have a media-type filtering system up there currently. And, uh, those sand filters are just going to have to sit idle until things change. There's just too much debris, and they plug up immediately. So, that's what I got. I, anybody, if you've got questions, uh, when we have one of these events, I'm, I try and respond as fast as possible. This one at the holiday, there was a lot of stuff going on and us trying to get things going, and it was very difficult. And I do agree that the, uh, as far as getting the word out can be difficult. Not everybody has got the social, social media pipeline to fire to. Uh, we, I believe we will try and do a better job of keeping people informed as to what the status of water and all that is. Try and make it so everybody can get that information.
That would be really helpful. Or when it filled a certain amount, maybe like, you've got two hours to draw some water, or twenty minutes, I mean, anything would've been, you know, would've been helpful, because...
Sure. Well, unfortunately, with that, until we got a lot of the system up and running, it's difficult for us to tell what kind of water we're going to be providing. And we have to be careful about not contaminating the system with water where we don't want to contaminate it. We, we try and be careful about what we open back up when we've had one of these events, so we don't contaminate more than...
I appreciate that, well, okay, so...
As far as water quality goes, we are doing it. We, we are doing all of our testing that we should be doing by state guidelines. We're following all of those protocols with our water that have been followed for years up here, and I feel very confident. All of our results are coming back just the way they should.
Okay, well, let's pray for spring.
Well, let's just hope Mother Nature doesn't dish it out in a one, two, three like that. That was a lot.
It was. Thank you.
Sure, uh, Eric, that it's in the summer at the moment, it really depend on Brighton Bush, it'll be out of here in a minute.
Yeah, that's what, Brighton Bush, when, uh, the lake comes back up, we can kind of switch over to Brighton Bush. Correct, correct. But do hope we're going to end up with a little more storage capacity. That's kind of the goal right now, is to have some, a little bit more, uh, in the event that we have to, uh, rely on what we've got saved up there. And that will come with a new plant, but we have to get from here to there.
Counselor?
Make sure we talk close in to my microphone. Other than the place for the audience watching, make sure they're hearing fine, uh, the question.
Yeah, thank you. And our sound guy back there sent me a text saying, that's funny, so... Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to something not on the agenda? Hearing none, moving on. Item eight, resolutions, orders, and administrative action. Item A, ordinance two seventy-one, ATV golf cart repealing ordinance two thirty-six and two forty. Uh, this time, we're going to open that up for a public comment. People who wish to comment, uh, on the ordinance. Same rules apply. This is time set aside for the public, uh, on, to address council on matters on the agenda. As before, commenters are limited to three minutes. Time may not be yielded. Questions from the council or staff or commenter should not be counted against the allotted three minutes. When you do, uh... When you do come forward, please give your full name and your Detroit address, please. I'm just going by order which we received. First, we have Elizabeth Smith, 220 Boulder, Boulder, Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council.
Is that on?
It is on.
Thank you.
And I, my name's Elizabeth Smith. I live at 220 Boulder. And I was, thank you, Mr. Counselor Luke. I was going to warn you, you need to eat your mic when you're talking 'cause the audio people cannot hear you at home. As some of you know, I have just spent the last four years as being the city council president, well, two years, for the city of Kaiser. And tonight I just come before you because I understand that, you know, communities are complaint-driven and the golf cart thing, the ATV thing, has become quite a complaint factor. The ordinance originally was passed in 2017 and then it was adjusted because the original ordinance stated that everyone had to be wearing a helmet that was inside of an ATV. They readjusted that in October of 2017 and said that eighteen and under has, is the requirement. It did not reference golf carts. The problem started clear back then. We've been here since 2008, before the fires, and some of the complaints were started at that time, but the fires obviously took that offline. Once fires were, you know, we were dealing with that, we started bringing people back into the communities, vacationers, weekenders, the complaints started again. Being married to Counselor Smith, I have received a lot of those complaints. I wanna encourage people, the correct way to complain about something is to actually contact the city. Without a record, it makes it very difficult for the city to actually take action on things. I know there's lots of questions about the actual complaint logs and such, and I've had many conversations with Sheriff Olson, Garrett Olson, and he, he would tell me multiple times, "Can you please have people call it in? Can you please have people call in when they see things?" Because he could not get the funding, nor could he get the additional time up here without the record of the complaint. So, I understand that there's frustrations out there and we've all seen, you know, kids running around. I witnessed it myself, you know, hanging off the back of a golf cart. And you don't have an option but to address this and you're not gonna have everybody on the same plate. It never happens. Welcome to being in, you know, government. That's, you're always gonna have somebody mad at you. But I just wanted to point out to the community that you do need to actually address the, the city. Email the city, detroit@wvi.com. If you guys could actually do a code enforcement button, I believe some cities have that option, you could go in and, and file that so that there is a record. Because going on Facebook, and I'm an admin on several of the pages, it doesn't help me or anybody else to, to know what's going on, what kind of things the council needs to actually be dealing with. So, going forth, as we try to negotiate through this ordinance and we hear people's opinions about, you know, the registrations and so forth, I just wanna make it clear, you have to do something. You can't leave the ordinance the way it currently sits because right now, golf carts aren't legal. They are not allowed under the current ordinance. In the current ordinance, you must be eighteen years of age or older not to have a helmet on. So, I appreciate the work that's been done for this ordinance to be updated and the other two repealed. And I appreciate the, the community wanting to speak to it and voice their concerns and maybe some of that can be taken into consideration prior to the final version being put out there. But it, the big thing is item number fourteen in that ordinance states clearly that if someone's coming in and registering their golf cart or their ATV, then they are waiving any liability to the city if there's an accident. That is critical. This community cannot take a lawsuit because of something that we just turned a blind eye to. So, I thank you for your work on this. I don't have a dog in the fight. I've had a golf cart, it doesn't work anymore, and our ATV burnt up. So, hopefully we can listen to everyone who wants to testify tonight and come to a, a community decision on how we wanna go forth, but you gotta do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, council? Thank you.
And don't forget to eat your mic so people can hear you.
Yes, thank you. Next, Rich and Shelley Duncan of 110 Deer Street.
Can I add a third question? Is it only the people that signed up online to speak or is it open to the, the, the... I just, I would yield to somebody if they had to sign up online in some way.
Good evening, I'm Rich Duncan. Wife, Shelley and I have property at 110 Deer and 115 Short. And certainly have enjoyed many summers and now some winters up at Detroit. And I just wanted to kinda share my experience that happened really the last thirty-six hours when I got, received a, a call that said, "Hey, do you know about some of these ordinances that are being passed in, up at Detroit?" And I said, "No," and, and started to talk about some of those things and then wanted to kinda find out more about the process and made a few phone calls, which stirred a few things, and then a few people called me. And so, I, I wanted to kinda, I guess, point out, and this is a great one here, is this, you know, golf cart or, you know, ATV ordinance is being developed. And I'm really concerned about the representation of council as to what the constituents really want. And I have not had a complaint or a commissioner call me, city councilor call me and, and ask my opinion of what do I have an issue with golf carts or the condition of helmets or, or a fee? And I haven't received anything of any question. I haven't received a, a personal email or I didn't see a, a letter in the mail. And so, the communication was, was back and forth was regarding, well, how do we find out about this council coming up and making ordinances and recommendations without really the understanding of their constituents? And of the twenty or thirty people that I was able to communicate with or they called back and forth, none of them felt like city council had ever asked their opinion or they weren't asked, you know, "Should we have a change in an ordinance?" So, anyway, I just wanted to point that out. You know, I think that there's some things that are good and bad and I would like to just, I think as a community, say, "We have a lot of things to take care of and spending a lot of time and a lot of attorney's time and a lot of issues on trying to change and modify ordinances until we get the communication in the town more connected and, you know, I don't think we can make those kinda decisions." So, thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'd like to take this minute and explain kind of how this works. And, and we're no different than any other city. When we take, when we undertake an ordinance like the ATV ordinance, we will start looking at it, but we did hold a public work session, a work session that public was invited to attend and give testimony. Last month, it was posted in the amended, the agenda that came out Thursday for. These are all standard. It's, it's not typical for a city to reach out overly and just say, "Okay, what do you think?" You have that option. People can always write in to, to the council, to the city, and that gets to the council. It does not have to be oral testimony here. Written testimony is fine. I enjoy seeing that because then I do get what I hold sides personally. But that's typically how it's done is we put it out on social media, "Hey, this, this event is happening. It could be a, a public hearing. It could be a work session." All those are always open to the public and people can, can make suggestions or testimony at those events, just kinda the way it works for a lot of cities. Thank you. Wes Arnold from 100 Lake Court.
Good evening, y'all. My name's Wes Arnold. The address is 100 Lake Court. Just a couple of quick questions that I have and then I'm trying to help speak for some folks that weren't able to, to show up. So, we had some questions just simply regarding the language. It does seem like there might be some minor revisions that might need to be necessary, such as, it looks like you guys did do a, you started to do it with respect to definition of golf carts, but for example, it just simply states not more than two persons, but there is a caveat that says, you know, two to eight seats. It just seems like that might be just a minor cleanup for, for a definition. You know, so it looks like, yeah, it just simply just seems like it should be cleaned up. And I did have a question, when you look at like the golf cart speed, the designation for fifteen miles per hour, would you be penalized if you were doing the posted speed limit of twenty miles per hour? Just, it seems like there might be some clarification there, right? Helmets, I absolutely agree with helmets on ATVs, motorcycles, side-by-sides seem a little weird only because you've got a cage and doors similar to a, a vehicle, but I don't, I don't know the legalities of that. The annual fee seems high where you have like an OHV tag that's ten dollars per season. You have a Snowpark pass that's twenty-five dollars per season. I had a few conversations where folks have people over and they'll have golf carts and, you know, they're instantly pushing back, saying they're not going to contribute to playing with the rules, playing by the rules, because it could be in five or six hundred dollars that they have to pay out for the season. So, it got me thinking, would Detroit be interested in doing like day passes or like monthly passes in addition to the annual pass? And I was also curious if there was like a, like a path for the funds, like a, a potential business plan to see what this will help facilitate for the city? I think that would be neat. And I was also curious about how the enforcement would work. For example, last year, I'm sure it was a fluke, but during the Fourth of July, there were folks over on Janus Court lighting off fireworks that were going off in the trees and they did not, they did not care, you know? And so, I think that it would just be great to see if there's just a clear path or a vision for what this stuff looks like and if we can build on this to make sure the town is as safe as you can make it. So, that's, that's what I've got.
I, I could answer some of those questions if you remind me of again.
So, language revisions, like if there, if there are, if, are you guys open for any suggestions or is it something that you're putting into effect this evening or...
No, we're not. We're trying to get everybody's, like you guys, I've been, I've been saying today as well, everybody's comments, everybody has, their voice in it. So, we are aware of the two to, the two to eight passenger carts. That's something that we've already talked about, getting that revised to cover anywhere from two-seat up to eight-seat.
Sure.
I don't know if they're making ten-seaters yet, but I'm sure eventually we'll have to go to that. So, the fee, I can tell you is, is something we just came up with, with our work session. We're open to suggestions. For example, I mean, what do you feel is fair? I know the ATV permits have been brought up as an example, but that's a whole department within the state that has to run that. And what we're trying to do is do a yearly thing because we're, our staff is only two people. So, we're trying to make it as easy as possible on the staff. I mean, maybe a hundred dollars isn't the answer. Maybe it's fifty dollars, maybe, I don't know.
Sure.
But it's something that we are open to.
Now, with the acceptance of somebody purchasing this permit, I mean, it seems like it would be reasonable for them to include their signature that would also indemnify the city in the event of an acceptance. So, it seems like there'd be...
Yes. That is one of the biggest things with the registration process is taking that, I guess, the owner of the vehicle taking, getting, taking back that responsibility if something does happen where, right now, I mean, I'm thankful that we haven't had any accidents, but as we all know, we've all seen things. We're, I think we've been pretty fortunate so far.
Yeah, I would completely agree. I think parents really need to focus in on what they're allowing their children to have access to. Is there any plan to, I can't imagine city council or, you know, your folks in the office being around on the weekends, 'cause I could see a lot of people coming in over the weekend not knowing that this is a requirement and then not having access to it. Is there a possibility to go through like the website?
That is, that is on the agenda as well, is having it wet, so they could print that out or have it on their phone. So, if they get, I don't know, when I say pulled over, I don't mean like pulled over, but if somebody asks you, or them, they can at least show that, "Yeah, I did that. It's right here."
Right. That makes sense.
When you sign up for this, whatever form that ends up taking, in the finality, you do, you get the pamphlet. I've heard several times, I don't know where the rules are, I've never seen it posted. We, as a city, have posted the, what the ATV guidelines were on bill, sandwich boards, on telephone poles before they burned down. We, we've posted it in a lot of different places. That didn't seem to get the message out.
Right.
So, you know, Marion County sheriffs has been asking for us to address this issue. It's, it may not be completely complaint-driven, but quite honestly, Marion County sheriff has been asking the city to deal with this for a long time and warned us if we didn't at some point address this and change what is in play, it could go away. So, this, we're trying to make this the, keep it from going away, 'cause if there is a critical accident with somebody that's underage and the city allowed it, we go down with it. This city, I can guarantee you, I've been set enough time through the fire and gone through the insurance process that we have, this city could not sustain a major lawsuit when we would be pulled into a lawsuit if an underage child, because of us not addressing that issue, an underage child with a golf cart was to be hit by a car and there was major implications to that, we would be sued. So, honestly, we're just trying to protect something that you all don't wanna see go away. City goes broke on a lawsuit, fingers are gonna get pointed at your city council for not doing the right thing.
Yeah.
And I'm not trying to, and I don't think any of the councilors here have any intention of clipping anybody's fund tickets.
Sure.
I'm not even wanting to clip my own.
Right.
It's just, at some point, as a city, you have to address a potential problem. And that's what luckily, right now, we're looking at as a potential problem, not a reactionary situation of how do we cover our butt now?
Sure, and that makes sense.
Yeah.
And that was like the, the next question to just kinda tone it back in, but like the speed, like so the, the UTVs, side-by-sides, slow-moving vehicles, it seemed that the ordinance indicated obviously that you shouldn't exceed the twenty miles per hour. We didn't catch anywhere in there that it addressed golf carts.
That's, and that's something that we, we need to revise as well.
Okay.
I mean, I personally think if a golf cart should do the speed outside the street, so, I mean, that's a good point and that's, that's why we are glad everybody showed up to, to give their opinions or their testimony on this, so.
Sure.
And you asked about the, what the money or the permit fee would go to?
Yeah, the next one was just the helmets. It was just, it seems not, I guess, kind of, I can't, I can't get to the, to the reasoning behind requiring helmets in an enclosed device like a side-by-side, for example.
I understand, and that is, that is something that we have tossed back and forth amongst ourselves, trying to do the right thing and we've relied on Marion County sheriffs to give us some of their advice and they bring out the ATV because I guess, I think that must be what the book, that they, they go with and that's what they use.
It's my understanding state statute says eighteen years old and younger are required to have a helmet on, on, in an ATV. That's, that's state statute, so, I mean, I think what we did is we tried to wind that back.
Yeah. You've heard that, that sheriff's office is kinda looking at us.
You've heard that, that sheriff's office is kind of looking at us, saying, you need to do some of this stuff. Also, some of that comes from Oregon Public Transportation, because when we first started this back in fifteen seventeen, we said golf, our first ask was golf carts, and we got told absolutely not, you know, and, and the threat was, I guess would be a threat, if you do this, we can't, we, the city... Thanks, Councilor Shepherd, applies for grants every year to research with some of our streets as state funding. They said if, if push comes to shove, we will disqualify, qualify for those grants. So I mean, we have a hammer hanging over our head saying, if you don't do some of this, all of this stuff could go away unless the whole program goes...
Makes sense.
So we're, we're fighting that also.
And just to go back to the ordinance and the fee, what, the whole idea is that will help fund an ordinance officer to be within the city? That would do the fireworks, things like that, not any nine-one-one calls, not any of that type thing? And the reason we haven't had an ordinance officer is quite frankly, we haven't had a judge since the fire. So we had to appoint a judge first, and they had to, they have to have court in Detroit for our charter.
Okay.
So that was why this is taking a lot longer than we had hoped with ordinance officers and all that. Our A-ordinance officer is, we had to get a judge in place, and we do have that now.
Fantastic. It sounds like you've pretty much...
Also, the fees could go, some of the fees could go towards street maintenance. I'm, I'm on a shorts, shoestring, pardon? My street budget's basically a shoestring budget. Don't have much money at all, and some of that money could go to street signs, fixing potholes, since you're using the street, that, that sort of thing. And it's a privilege, not a right, and you're supporting the, you're supporting the town by paying that permit fee.
Right. Yeah, my biggest concern from the outside looking in, and you guys have been very insightful making sure folks have access to it, but, you know, when you ride your, you drive your golf cart down to the marinas, you, you tend to store everything, put it away, and I just immediately could see an enforcement officer saying, well, it's not displayed, then, you know, it's not as though we have license plates like we do vehicles.
Right.
How would we properly enforce that? How do we make sure that, you know, there, it just seemed like there was maybe a more clear path?
Sure, and, and we are going through all these paths, trying to come to the easiest, most effective way of going about this, and we're not trying to by any means take away golf carts or anything like that. We're just trying to future-proof this, so us that do have golf carts and ATVs, this will always be, or at least for the future, will be available and an option.
Makes sense, perfect.
Thank you. You're gonna have to come, whoa, 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 no, you'd have to come up and, and sign in. Okay, so those are the people who signed up. Is there anybody else who would like to address counsel? So come on up and do that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bob Cotry. I did have a house here on top of the hill. It's getting built again. As an ATV owner, it would almost be dumb not to have insurance on it, to, to protect yourself against whether you have a passenger, whether you roll it yourself, personal liability, whatever it may be, hit somebody, I think, solve the whole issue by making it mandatory. Sorry, I'm out of air. To have, golf carts have to have insurance for that same reason, because that way the city's not necessarily sued directly.
Sure, and that's, and that's a great idea, and with that, just have proof when you, when you get your permit or registration, whatever we call it, you show proof of that, that you're good.
Just adding to it, yeah.
And that's a very good point. I was driving home one night and I hit a girl, broke her leg. Who's liable? I don't have, I mean, if I don't have insurance.
Right.
They don't have insurance. I'm just saying. That gets rid of a hell of a lot of lawsuits.
Yes, it does.
Minor ones anyway.
But as it was explained to me a little bit by one of the sheriff's deputies, part of that problem is if we're not enforcing an ordinance, they can come after your insurance, but they could also still come after the city, and the city is perceived to have deep pockets. And so that's where an attorney's, let's go after the city because that's where the money is, or the, your individual insurance. And in the ordinance, it does talk about item twelve, financial requirements, ATV, LSV, low-speed vehicles, golf carts operated under this ordinance must meet the financial responsibility requirements under ORS eight oh six point zero six oh for the purpose of the section thirteen. Financial responsibility requirements means the ability to respond in damages or liability on account of accidents arising out of the ownership, operation, maintenance, and/or use of ATV, LSV golf carts in a manner provided by ORS eight oh six oh six oh, which is the insurance, you have to have the insurance. So it is in the ordinance now.
Okay. And then going back to, the next thing is, I'll put it through as I can, I'm not a Kate Brown fan. So, everything that is insured, every, every dime you pay for taxes, whether it's hunting, fishing, whatever you want to do in the world today, all goes to the general fund. So, I can't remember your name.
Uh, Ger.
Yeah. So right away, you're trying to rob the money that's going to go towards the fees for street improvements and signs and stuff like that. Let's make it go to the point of what the problem is, probably more insurance. Just saying. That's what I'm...
Thank you. Yeah. Counselor? Can we get through these folks in there?
Well, I, I want to speak to his issue regarding the fees, because a couple of months ago, I tried to produce a very fundamental business case or cost-benefit analysis regarding our hundred dollar per ATV fee. And when I started listing all of the issues that our two staff have to be involved with in terms of registration, providing licenses, keeping track of infractions, going to court with those, notifying people on an annual basis that it has to be renewed, if, you know, I had an electrician at my house last week and it was a hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour. I don't know what we should charge for our staff, but I can tell you this, that if you start looking at the hours that they're going to spend registering, keeping track of, taking complaints, and then adjudicating through our, our judge, our local judge, and then notifying people on an annual basis, that hundred dollars is going to disappear very quick. It wouldn't serve as one pothole, Shep, I'm sorry, Councilor Shepherd. So I, I think it's a minimum amount, and I, I think I would certainly defend that amount to anyone. And I'd be happy to share my numbers. I shared my business case with my colleagues on the council, and I'm happy to share it with any of you, so.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address counsel on ordinance number two seven one?
I had a couple of questions. Donnie Chandler with three oh five and two ninety-five Boulder. So I read through that several times the other night when I was aware of it, and in those, in the new laws or what you're calling for the golf carts, it says right on there the moving, the slow-moving triangles, the reflectors, all the different lights. If they've got working brake lights and headlights, why do we have to do all that? They're not a farm tractor.
That was something that we looked at from what we've heard from other cities. We're not, what Marion County Sheriff requested was a headlight and taillights on all vehicles, and it's more the taillights because of, if at dark, where the car comes up on the back of a golf cart, there's a good chance they may not see them, and that's why that is. But if, if it's built with that, that, I mean, in my opinion, that would be, that's what I'm aiming for is for safety is, is those, not the triangle or...
So that's just on there for now?
Um...
Because I read it like it needed to be on there.
I, I also believe that the, the lights issue is, I believe also, we spoke about this, it's a, it's a dusk to dawn thing. I mean, if you're not operating your golf cart after dusk, you probably don't need lights. The point being is, I mean, you could get a citation if it's getting pretty dark and you're rolling down the street, the golf cart with no lights, because it's...
I wouldn't argue that, I'm just, the way I read it, and then it also reads on there, if you read through it, it talks about having license plate lights, so obviously you're not going to be able to license one of those. So why do you need that?
That there will, your permit that will be issued through the city, it will be given, that permit number will be, we haven't figured that out. It's a sticker form or some form of identification that is highly visible on your ATV or your side-by-side.
So it would need to be lit in the dark in place of a license plate? I'm just trying to figure out, because I want to know what keeps you not being bothered versus who's, you know, how many times do you get hassled day after day or weekend?
Well, we're certainly trying to avoid that scenario.
That's where I see it going, that's why I'm asking these questions, and I think a lot of people are kind of wondering that too.
Well, I think we, we are striving for clarity in this to make certain that when this rolls out, it's not a big boondoggle. I don't want somebody getting pulled over because they don't have a triangle on the back of their golf cart, but it didn't mean, it doesn't mean it...
Right.
I mean, however, they're driving down the street in the middle of the night with no lights on, that's another story. And it's, it's about defining what's important to keep this thing sensible.
So, two other things, I read through that, and I guess I just want to ask you guys. You mentioned on, it needs to have a VIN number, so that's the way you can get a registration. My family owns a couple golf carts, they don't have VIN numbers, they have serial numbers. You go to DMV or DOT and you try and do that, I mean, you'd have to start now and hope you got it by September or next, you know, it, it doesn't work that way. How are we supposed to do that?
We're not, we're not going to correlate this with DMV.
But it says it in the ordinance, it talks about it.
It needs to have, we, we need to have an identifiable number on it.
So a serial number is okay in place of a VIN number?
Yep.
Okay, because it doesn't...
That's a great idea to put in there.
It just doesn't read that way.
Serial order.
Yeah. So maybe if that was changed.
Yeah. An identifying number.
Okay. And then as far as the insurance, like, mine's on my homeowner's. I don't have any paperwork for that, I'm sure I can get it. Is that okay, or does it need to carry its own policy, like a car? Because golf carts are weird, they're not.
Yeah, right.
And I know usually they're on, they're covered under homeowner's, so.
That's a good point too, that we have to address.
We'll address that.
Good points. And the license plate I can talk about, compared to the blue to the, the license plate is the sticker replacement we provide, not a DOT or something like that. We're trying to come up with something that this, oh, that blue golf cart just sped by and turned the corner and left the golf cart.
Right.
So some sort of identification.
Okay. I was just curious on the lighting and some of the standards on how, how that was going to shake out and what was really expected versus not, because...
Thank you.
Most of the ones you see running around here, they're not all decked out with all the proper equipment. They got lights and taillights and, I mean, that's it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. And I would...
Thank you.
Yeah, I would encourage anyone, if you have questions or things you would like to see addressed, please email the city as we look at this for the next, probably a month now, so we can address those as we go. Okay? So, anybody else wish to address counsel on ordinance number two seven one?
Got a hand up. Come on.
You have to stand up if you still can't see your hand. Hi. Tracy Bowlin, one ten Lake Street. Thank you for having me. I just wanted to bring to the attention that over the last year, I've been doing a lot of research when it comes to ATVs, golf carts, recreational vehicles. City of Detroit, gotten into the budgets, gotten into the money that comes into the town, and I think that there's a lack of information that the majority of the community actually has that knows that the city of Detroit actually doesn't get a lot of money from the stuff that's going on in the city of Detroit. We have a high amount of tourism here during, you know, the season. We have a high amount of RVs that come in, a high amount of ATVs and boats, and most people don't know that the city actually doesn't get hardly any money off of that. There's no money that comes in off of the boats whatsoever. There's very little that comes in off of the RVs, and to this point, there's no money that comes in off of the ATVs or the golf carts. Yet, those things all bring in people and, and usage on the city of Detroit. We have people going to the parks and using the parks and the facilities at the parks, but we don't even actually have any funds coming back in to help put toilet paper into the, into the restrooms. We've lost a considerable amount of money from our TOT tax. A lot of people don't realize that with the TOT tax, there's three RV parks in this town, but the city doesn't get hardly any money from those RV parks, because you have to stay less than thirty days in order to collect a, a tax on that. So, the only money that's actually coming in off of the TOT, TOT tax is the hotels. Well, we lost one and a half hotels, so that money is very little too. Some of that money is going to help fund staff, roads and stuff like that, and we no longer have that money. So, we have to get money somewhere. People are living here, people are vacationing here, and nobody's investing back in this town. And we have to get the money back in this town for people to, to have the things that they want, like drivable roads without potholes, safety going down the road, knowing that you're not going to hit somebody's child, knowing that i-if there is a problem, then we can take, you know, we can find out where that problem is coming from. The, the money is a really big issue, and I would like people to realize that it's not just about, why do I have to pay a hundred dollars to put a ATV fee on there? I think that's actually very reasonable. When there was some contention about the fee that came up, I did even more research, and I looked into a lot of the towns around here in Oregon, especially the ones that were centered around tourism. One of the towns charged forty-eight dollars for their permit, but they also require a certificate of insurance be provided that shows personal damage and property damage, and you also may not drive your ATV from sunset to sunrise. And some of them also had where you could only drive your ATVs and golf carts during special events. So I believe that some of the things that Detroit is doing is offsetting by saying, hey, we don't have these other things going on here, but we also do have staff and everybody else to take care of the permit and printing the permit and whatnot. So I believe that a hundred dollars is reasonable, and I would ask that the council stick with that amount. I don't think that anything lower than that should be considered. I have a golf cart, I just got one, I've never had a golf cart before, but I am glad to pay the hundred dollars. Somebody did mention something about the day pass and the, and the monthly pass, I think that's a great idea, and getting that so that, you know, people do have that option. And the only other thing that I wanted to bring up with is, I know there's contention with wearing a helmet, you know, sixteen, some people saying they're teenagers and stuff, you know, fifteen, sixteen shouldn't have to wear a helmet, but I just want to remind everybody that the law is sixteen years old to ride a bicycle even, or a scooter or roller skate. So when we're putting our kids in ATVs and golf carts on roads that have semis and recreational vehicles and cars, I think that that safety is very important. You can get whiplash being hit at a stop sign at five miles an hour. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address counsel on ordinance number two seven one? Hearing, hearing none. Counsel, discussion on ordinance two seven one. Your motion?
I would make a motion now that we table this ordinance two seven one, if it's carried on to February next day.
Have a motion to table ordinance 271 to the February council meeting. Second? Second Counsel Luke, discussion? Recorder call the roll.
Counsel Tesdell?
Aye.
Counsel Nielsen?
Aye.
Counsel Shepherd?
Aye.
Mayor Tret?
Aye.
Counsel Smith?
Aye.
Counsel Page?
Aye.
Counsel Luke?
Motion passes unanimously. Item 8B, critical infrastructure, the undergrounding of, critical infrastructure primarily high-speed fiber. Just an update, we've been meeting with, we've had two meetings now with CPI and Zipley Fiber about undergrounding Zipley's cable, the fiber cable in the city. They initially said they were not going to do it, it was too expensive. The second meeting happened, there was some softening on that, and currently what they came up with is Zipley is talking with CPI, trying to get all the letters right, with ways to, they are going to use CPI's cable and do that, and instead of them buying all of that, they're going to pay, it looks like they're working on a fee where Zipley would pay CPI monthly for the use of their, their cable.
Conduit.
Conduit, thank you, their conduit, which is easier for them if they're a for-profit company, and they say it's easier, the word I got from Zipley was, it's easier to show their stockholders that it's cost of doing business than trying to invest in infrastructure. So, that conversation is underway. We're staying in touch with, with them on, on how that's going. Billy Terry, who was with CPI, said there has been some positive motion in that, so we'll stay on top of it and, and continue to try and get that happening. Moving along, item C, we have received following letter from Kevin Hills, to whom it may concern, I officially resigned from the planning commission due to the sale of my permanent residence in Detroit, Oregon. It was requested of me in accordance with the city charter. Thank you for your time and attention, I have enjoyed being a part of this commission and will apply if I become a landowner again in the future. So do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Commissioner Hills from the Detroit Planning Commission? Counsel Nielsen moves to accept the resignation. Second?
Second.
Second Counsel Tesdell? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay. Motion passes six to one. Counsel Luke voting no. Staff report on RVs. Okay. Sorry for that. McCray Carmichael is doing our city planning, she works for COG. Unfortunately, she was involved in an accident on Sunday, and so she is not available to make the staff report. So I would accept the motion to move staff report on RVs to the February regular council meeting. Counsel Luke moves to move the item D, staff report on RVs to the February council meeting, regular council meeting. Do I have a second? Second Counsel Smith, discussion? And we wish her well in her recovery. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, aye? Oppose, same sign? Extentions? Motion passes unanimously. Lurique Piers to the park restroom. Counsel Luke?
Thank you, Mayor Tret. We've had a leak in the park restroom building for quite some time, and after taking a real close look at it, figured out that the building was put together in multiple pieces and just a seam right up on over the top, not just down the middle. So, I have, I had contacted one contractor to take a look, I have not heard back from them yet. I sent a couple emails, I did have another contractor come up yesterday and gave me a proposal of to dig out everything that's there, take the tape off, prep it, dry it. It does have to be done in warm weather because it's concrete. And his proposal was to basically grind out the groove, fill that with an expanding urethane, also put a cloth tape over the top of that that will absorb that, become part of that patch, and then two more layers of that fabric absorbed with the urethane on top that bonds to the concrete. And he said it's really the only way to do it, to make it last. And that proposal was for $3,484.29. We have approximately $14,000 in an account from Marion County, from the recovery that can be used on the parks, and I'm hoping that we can use that money, which needs to be used up by June, to take care of this. But it would need to be done in June, most likely. Along with that, I had that same contractor take a look, he also does spray foam insulation and some other things. And I also had money, well, I had an electrical company give us an amazingly inexpensive bid to put in electric heaters, commercial electric heater in each restroom because the faucets froze in this last freeze and broke, and the concrete cannot continue to stay getting sub-zero temperatures with moisture. It's going to, that building's going to fall apart. It gets moisture absorbed in the concrete, freezes and breaks. So, $800 to put two heaters in. And then another 400 if we put one in the city shop, which is part of the park, so that everything doesn't freeze in there. So I put together a number of different proposals and so forth that happy to table, you know, and get on, in writing this, just literally got the finals on my way here via text message. And like I said, drove up yesterday to make sure, and I'm waiting for another repair on the roof estimate and so forth, so.
So we can just forward this to the February council meeting?
I, I would like to actually do that.
I don't think we need a motion, because we didn't really have a motion tonight on the agenda. Thank you. So that will be moved to the February meeting. Item 7F, website review. Counsel Page?
This is a kind of a tail end thing related to the water crisis that we dealt with over the holidays, and our current contract with our city website person expired in October. And so, we need to address that for the up and coming year anyway, and I, I think this is a perfect time for us to address our level of communication with the public about some of the things going on in the city and maybe some of the failures in that communication. So, I would like to make a motion that council either has a work session or has some level of discussion related to what we want our website to look like, how we want it to perform, what message it sends out to the citizens, and how frequently it is updated and, and giving the public information, especially at critical times. So, with that being said, I, I don't know what's more appropriate, work session and then come back, or if we open this up, or it would seem to me we would have some guidelines that we would put together before we could even open that up for bid process.
Could we make that a motion to form a committee of council and people in that role?
Sure.
And then come back to council with a recommendation? And I'm thinking of certain, certain people that do a lot of this kind of stuff that would probably be willing to work on that? I think they have in the past.
I think that would be the best way to approach this. So we, as a city, are doing the communication that we need to do, and we're also at the same time addressing that we did have a contract that just kind of rolled forward, and it's time for us to, you know, really get a grip on that and, and get something that makes sense. Whether it be the person that's doing it now or somebody else, we just need to do a better job.
Have a motion, Counsel Page, to form a website review committee made up of council members and members of the community at large. Do I have a second? Second Counsel Smith, discussion?
I, I'd like to add also to the public and everyone listening, it would be immensely helpful if you guys would actually send an email to the city and let us know what you have in terms of ideas. In the last couple days, I fielded a number of calls, people upset because they didn't know about the ATV ordinance, they this, they that, and it got to the point where I was like, whoa, wait a minute. I've been here every month, everything we put is in public record, it is put in the minutes and so forth. But I understand that even though we don't operate any different than any other city, I understand we're a special case, okay? We have a community in a small-town atmosphere, and we want to keep that. It would be helpful to actually hear because I don't do well with that type of thing. It's not, it's not in my wheelhouse of great ideas of how to communicate well with social media or however it may be. I think this is an opportune time for us to really revamp the website because I personally feel it's ridiculous that anybody gets any information except from the city website. We should have one place to go, and it, everything's covered. It should be updated every week, it should be right on the money, and someone, committee members or council or, hate to say it, staff, I don't, you don't have time, but somebody, maybe some volunteers, Tracy, I mean, sorry, that would, you know, take that and, and run with it. It would be really helpful for everyone because we really do want to do a great job.
Okay, and we would accept people, if you contact the city and say you'd like to be on that committee, we'll pick some people that know what they're doing and go from there. Nothing else on item 7?
Excuse me, Mayor Tret?
I'm sorry?
It was a first-
I didn't vote on the motion, did I? Okay. All in favor of forming a website review committee, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Extentions? Motion passes unanimously.
One more thing. I just realized that I left Matt off the agenda. Can he go next? With his staff report?
If he gives us each a dollar. Matt Delmorel from HBH Engineering, thank you for an update.
Yeah, so it's fairly, yeah, I'm Matt Delmorel with HBH Consulting Engineers, city engineer. Pretty, I don't want to say low-key month, it wasn't. A lot happened, not a lot of progress. We're kind of dealing with funding agencies, FEMA, on the overall water system rebuild, but I think we have a lot of good progress that happened in the short term to shore some things up. I did actually, on my way to this meeting, receive a call from the outdoor fence company. You guys are on the schedule for the Brighton Bush pump station. They are hoping to have a crew out either late this week or early ne- next week. Can you guys hear me? All right. To get the fence in at the Brighton Bush pump station, so that is progressing and moving forward, and hopefully by the middle of next week, or at least by the end of next week, that fence will be completed. I've kind of had some discussions back and forth with Eric on a rate study, so we're kind of just still evaluating that. We've got one funding application in, we have an option for a second funding application we're holding off on for now, but that'll also be in the works. And hopefully that the permanent water treatment plant will be out to bid in the next week or two, probably realistically next week sometime. It'll be out to bid, and we'll have a, I don't want to say short bid period on that, slightly shorter than normal, just to keep that project moving along. So, that's kind of what we have. Any questions?
Questions for Counsel Tesdell?
I have one. We had concerns about water storage. How much larger will the new water storage be versus our last?
So, and that is going to be one of the slower-moving projects because it is actually part of the city's water master plan essentially, that you guys are due for a new water reservoir. So the reservoir that you guys had was roughly 190,000 gallons. In addition to the 200,000 gallon tank you have up there right now, the new one that will be going back will be roughly 530,000 gallons, so it will be more than double what you lost in the fire, bringing your total storage capacity roughly to about 730,000 gallons is what we're aiming for. So that will bring you guys current with your water master plan, and that's a little bit of the reason for why it's taking a little bit longer, is a reservoir of that size will not fit where the old one was. So we had to come up with new land to get that, which expanded the easement with the Oregon Department of Forestry. But that is developing on a previously undeveloped site, which means it has to go through a lot more of the environmental and historical resources and environmental habitat review, essentially.
Other questions? So, just with what came up earlier this evening, that amount, 700,000 gallons, if we had the same situation we did last month, we'd be in a lot better shape for a longer period.
You would be in a lot better shape, which is typically what would happen when you have such a poor water quality event, when there's such a big storm and the rivers get so inundated with sediment, there's not a whole lot you can do regardless of treatment. And it's just kind of back off, rely on your storage that you do have. So that larger reservoir will give you guys a much bigger buffer than you had, not just now, but even before the fires came through. In the short term, we are working with FEMA to boost your temporary storage from what you currently have, as well as potentially provide additional water treatment above what you currently have now.
Thank you. Anything else from that? Thank you for making the trip up. Moving along, item 8, consent calendar. We'll be voting to approve the minutes of the Detroit City Council meeting of December 13th, 2022, and approval to pay the bills. Any questions on the minutes of the Detroit City Council meeting?
I'd like to make a correction on the minutes.
Okay.
In there it said Detroit was awarded a $250,000 grant from ODOT to use for city and streets. Actually, it's site-specific, you can only use it for, and the grant was for paving East Forest Avenue and putting in a walkway. And we've had 14 grants over the last 20 years. They used to be 25,000, they've gone up, up to, they went to 50 and 100, and now they're at a quarter of a million, but I just wanted to make that correction.
So do I have, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar with the addition of the correction of the minutes of the December 13th, 2022 council meeting? And pay the bills. Okay? Motion, Counsel Luke, second Counsel Page, to approve the consent calendar. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Oppose, same sign? Extentions? Motion passes unanimously. Item 9, staff reports. Marion County Community Development Manager, Mr. Epley is not here tonight. City Recorder?
I want Ed to introduce, this is Lindsay, she's going to be our new city clerk, and I'm not sure if all of you've met her yet. And I've been working with Michelle and Lindsay, training and getting them ready to take over when I leave the office.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Lindsay. We're hearing good things about you already, so.
Yep.
Very nice. Thank you. City Clerk? Planning commission, she's still hurt. Marion County Sheriff's Office, I don't see anybody here. USF War Service, no update. We are going to invite the new city, or the new Detroit Ranger, District Ranger to the February meeting. Go from there. Idana Detroit Rural Fire Protection District, anybody from here, there? Okay. North St. Amsewir Authority, Council Nielsen.
I'll do it.
Okay, thank you. Moving along. City council reports, Council Shepherd.
Yeah, I would like to try to get things going, to get the plow mounted on the water truck. We're already halfway through our snow season, we've been pretty lucky, but our hourly rate for plowing went up about forty-five percent from last year, and I believe we could probably split it between the water department and the street department to pay for the mounting the plow, but it would pay for itself right away, but I'd like to see that happen in the near future. Also, I want to get bids out for the East Forest Avenue paving and walkway project. And we have a lot of street signs that need to be repaired and replaced and installed, and that's about it.
Thank you. Council Page?
Everybody's probably heard enough from me tonight. We did produce one million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand gallons of water in the last month, and we used nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-two. So we're zeroing in on our water losses in spite of the huge loss that we did have in the tank draining down. Our accountability on our water is coming into play, and I'm just glad to see that. So assuming we don't have major leaks and blowouts, we're going to be able to keep a better handle on our water. Yes, Ed, and Wes, thank you for fixing your toilets.
Okay, thank you. Council Luke?
Thanks, Mayor Tret. As reported earlier on the city park restrooms, roof, and heaters for that, and looking into getting some heat in the city shop, and possibly some lights in there too. I'm working now, just the last couple days, and been working with Kelly a little bit and investigating since the incident that we had with power outage and so forth, it was the test run, if you say. We burnt an awful lot of propane here, and we found out that the generator is not powering the things that it needs to be powering. Also, I heard of a leak in the gymnasium, and I need to do some more investigation on who, what, when, why, where, who's responsible for those things, and what we can do to get everything properly functioning in the case of the next time.
Thank you. Council Teasdale?
Okay, so I'm the Parks Commissioner, and now that it seems like the downtown area sewer septic systems might be more local and not be put into the field in the park, I'm going to start researching the neighboring cities who have updated or installed new parks, find out who did their plans. I'd like to get a quote on the park and then work towards getting a grant for a revised parks plan. And then I can find the folks that applied to be on the Parks Committee and call them up and start drumming that up because it's time. I feel like we could get approval, we could get a grant for this park. I think people are still thinking about Detroit. So that's what I'm hoping for, and I want to say thanks to Tim for helping out with the Parks Building. I know that Mike's been talking about that leak for a while, so that's it.
Thank you. Council Smith?
I don't have anything new to report.
Council Nielsen?
Thank you, Mayor Tret. Our visioning project for the Downtown Business Corps continues to slowly move along. I reported last month that we would probably be receiving contract proposals from an advertisement that should have occurred a month ago, but it's occurring now, so hopefully we'll have responses from potential contractors or consultants in February. We had our monthly meeting of the North St. Amsewir Advisory Council last evening, and we're alerted by Peter Olson, who's with Keller and Associates, that the only alternatives related to temporary sewer opportunities in the Business Corps will be on the properties of the business owners, and that all other alternatives that have been rumored about for the last three or four months have been set aside, for example, the park or a large pumping station somewhere, located somewhere within the community. Peter is continuing to work with individuals within our business community to try and define exactly what it is they would like to develop on their properties, and then do some design work in terms of using advanced technology to keep the temporary sewer systems on their property, or perhaps cluster two or three properties together where one property might have a minor water sewage usage per day, where another one might have a larger one, and combine that land in order to produce a temporary septic system until the ultimate system can be produced five to seven years down the road. So Peter, along with other people at the county, will continue to work with owners in our business district, define those plans, and report back to us on a regular basis. There is still a board position open for the NSSA Board from the Idana area, so I announce this every month, and so far I've not been successful in gendering any kind of interest towards volunteerism in this regard, but if you know of anybody in the Idana area that might be willing to help us out, it would be appreciated. The last thing is to mention again, our charter project committee, as you all know, the charter failed by four votes in the last election, and I'm going to be gone for about a month, so after I return, we're going to get together with the attorney from COG, who led us through our last process, talk about where we might go from here. And as I said last month, the issue is not going to probably be to manipulate, manage, or massage the language that we went through last year during our process, but rather to do a much better job of communicating why it's important for those changes to be made in our charter so that we can function aggressively as a community and help to rebuild and redevelop all resources here. And I'd take just a second. Tracy Boland brought up a lot of good questions and a lot of good points about revenues and our cash flow for the city. I learned just recently that, and I'm taking the opportunity to notice this group because we don't normally have an audience this size, that last year, the total resources from property tax revenue that Detroit received from the county was under fifty thousand dollars. That's a pittance compared to what it takes to operate this municipality. So when you start thinking about all these fees that people talk about, how we might be enriching ourselves or others, you know, the city is on a very tight budget. And one of the things that's going to come up in the future is the RV issues. I can tell you right now that there's a reason that cities aren't allowing lots of RV use within the city is because it doesn't develop a tax base. And that may be offensive to some of you, and I don't want to offend anybody. I love this community. I've been here since I was fifteen, and that was over sixty years ago. So, but we need the city redeveloped as a community with residential housing primarily, not RVs. RVs should be a secondary issue, and they should be allowed, but not three and four or five per lot. That's one man's opinion, and I'm happy to defend that anytime with a lot of different numbers, but we need a community with stiff-built homes if we're going to survive, grow, and flourish as Detroit. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mayor's report, I'm just going to, there have been signs posted around the community about the Corps of Engineers seeking public comment. They're doing a study on a proposed thirty-year plan for managing the Willamette Valley Dam System. That includes Detroit, Big Cliff. They had virtual public meetings last month. They're having in-person public meetings this month. Tomorrow night, January eleventh, from six to eight, they'll be at Sweet Home, in Sweet Home, at the Sweet Home Senior Center. On Thursday, they'll be in Staton, at the Staton Community Center, which is, I think, by the pool, but it should be noted, if you've seen that and are planning to attend, that meeting starts at noon and goes till two, and it's not an evening meeting. So this, this plan they're working on affects us. Basically, the plan details seven potential courses of action, including one most preferred by the Corps, and essentially lays out a long-term path for achieving the congressionally authorized purposes of the Corps' Willamette Valley system while improving conditions for endangered fish. So this has potential to have great impact, either positive or negative, on the city of Detroit. If you want to attend one of those meetings, and we're here tonight, I do have the addresses up here. I'll be happy to share those with you and see you there. Again, Sweet Home tomorrow night from six to eight, and on Thursday at the Staton Community Center from twelve to two. Lastly, I would like to give a huge shout out to city water staff and park people, Derek Willock, Mike Etter, and Richie Kane. Those three folks, along with Bob Bruce, gave up a lot of their Christmas Eve and Christmas Day trying to get water back into the community, and as you heard earlier, worked under some pretty crappy conditions and got it back. I know, not as fast as we had liked, but considering everything that was going on. We thought on Saturday or Sunday that we had things under control because we'd identified the leaks. It wasn't until overnight on, into Monday morning, that we figured out that the intakes were being clogged, and so that snuck up on us from the backside. So, but a huge thank you to those four, those five, four people for giving up a lot of Christmas and that to try and get us back up and running. And that's my report. Any other business before the council? Upcoming meetings, regular session of the Detroit City Council, February fourteenth, 2023, at the Detroit City Hall, six thirty PM. And again, I would remind people the agenda, and I think we're going to start posting the packet with the agenda, comes out on Thursday on the social media, and it will be on the city's website. With, do I have a motion to adjourn? Council Page moves to adjourn. Council Luke second, it's all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Abstentions? We are adjourned at eight fourteen.